Alright, we're good to go.
Alright, so um. Shane, we're ready to go, correct? I'm sorry.
Yep, we're ready to go. Yep.
Everybody's let in?
Yep, everyone's in.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so being six thirty on April seventeenth. This Wednesday and have a quorum. I'll call the bridge out of planning board to order item one. Um, I'll then go to. Shane, did you pull that up in the word?
You want me to pull up the governor's order? Yeah, I can do that. It should be on the screen.
Let me read in the um, the media instructions. So this 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 meeting this evening is being remotely held in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. Pursuant to the government's approval of supplemental budget goal. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to November thirty first twenty twenty three. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely. Without a requirement of the public body. Physically present at meeting locations to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The line of extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law. Probably extending the expiration date. Or the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty first twenty twenty three to March thirty first twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely. They shall address questions through the chair of the board or host this evening, who is Mr. Um, O'Brien. So all votes will be taken as roll calls. Um. Shane, you can scream for about.
Really?
Can you scroll down?
Oh, scroll down? Oh, sorry.
So, so all all votes will be taken as roll calls. Um, I'm Patrick, just the chair. Is this is Michael McDonald for this this evening?
He is.
Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, this has to be a horse and this is Steve, um. Mr. Stephen Geller. Can you pull that remote video, Shane?
I'm sorry, what was that, Pat?
The last paragraph for the remote meeting instructions.
Yeah, I can pull that up again. It's okay. Sure.
This is the other number, this is the other whole page, right?
No, this is just it for in terms of what I I provided. Roll call votes and making sure that uh members of the public body be audible to each other um and then the members of the public uh.
Alright. Alright, so um, let me go back to the agenda. Alright, item two, we had public hearings this evening. The first public hearing we have is is four fifty six Bedford Street. Lots sixty lot map sixty two lots thirty four and eight. This is the proposed expansion of a parking count pursuant to section ten point six. Site plan approval, this was continued from March twentieth twenty twenty four. Mr. O'Brien, can you go some update on this?
Um, I haven't.
I can do it. So we've issued through conservation commission, we've issued a notice of violation to the property owner. We're gonna follow up with a cease and desist for both businesses.
Alright, great. So do we want to just continue this out for the May meeting, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, if we want to continue this out to the May fifteenth meeting, that's fine.
Alright, so do we have a motion to continue this up to the May fifteenth meeting?
So moved.
Hi, Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
I can second.
Hi, Ms. Rojas, do we have any discussion on this? So take the role, um, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Oh, Pat, we also have uh Ted Ted Haley's here and MJ Spagoner is here as well.
Alright, great. So we just had um a member, Mr. Uh Ted Edward Haley join and I'll alternate member, Ms. MJ Spagon this evening.
Mr. Haley needs to vote.
I'm a yes.
Uh, I apologize. So you were there the whole time, Mr. Haley, I'm sorry.
I was, I'm not offended.
I'm working on one screen tonight. Usually I work on three big ones, so I apologize. Um, alright, so then let's go to uh zero Plymouth Street. This is map twenty four, lot fifty two. This is site plan review on the ten point six for new office warehouse building and packing drainage utilities. This is continued from March twentieth as well. Um, I believe Mr. O'Brien just received the continuation request for the May second meeting, is that correct?
Uh, that would be correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, received an email at six fourteen um from Drew Dyer. Hello, Shane. Please accept this email to request a continuation for Mel and Plymouth Street site plan. We would like to be placed on the second scheduled meeting in a uh second scheduled meeting in May, so that would be the May fifteenth meeting.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue this to um May second?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
They said, oh, excuse me, this meeting, not May second, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Um, do we have a motion to continue this to the May fifteenth meeting?
So moved.
Is that Mr. Haley? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald, any discussion? Now take the role, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so um. Eight fifteen Benson Street is our third public hearing this evening. And this one looks like we will uh be on this evening, so just reiterating um how the public hearing process will go. We'll ask the applicant to provide us with any updates. Um, we did have a sidewalk on this. The board can then discuss the sidewalk and any comments that they have on the plan, questions they have for the applicant. And then we'll turn it over to the public for public comment. We just ask you to state your name. Your address um and ask your question for the record. Um, so with that being said, uh, we can open up eight fifteen Benson Street, the six map eighty eight. Lot twenty three, the site plan review on the section ten point six for new commercial retail building. As well as self-storage facilities and oversight improvements. This has continued uh from March twentieth um as well. At this point, I'll open the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the applicant to see if they want to add any additional information or make a presentation we will turn over to the board. Is anybody here for the applicant?
Both Larry and I are here. I'm I'm thinking Larry would like maybe to discuss it.
I know Mr. Silva just re-entered uh the room, so I think he's just getting situated.
Okay. Uh, meanwhile, I will share. Something?
Sure thing, you're allowed to share.
What would I share? Let's go with. He can't connect. Why does this keep happening?
I'm just gonna give him thirty seconds, but.
Yeah, he's saying he can't connect. I'm just gonna put the thing on the screen. Um, I know we did have a sidewalk and I know we did want to hear back from board members, but uh if I can. Message him real quick. Well, I don't want to delay any longer. If you want to just hop onto whatever board discussion you would like after the sidewalk.
Sure, sure. Um, I just want to kind of summarize uh to those. May not be aware, the board had a uh sidewalk on April fifth at noon time. Uh, it was properly posted. Um, in which we had a three members of the planning board attend on the sidewalk, um where Silva Engineering provided us information. Um, of the sidewalk, but um, yeah, I'll leave it up to the board to um kind of. Explain what they saw, um if anyone was participating in the sidewalk or if anyone went to the site just to kind of look at it since that time.
Alright, so I'll open it up to uh the board members, I know myself, Mr. Geller. And Mr. Haley were there the day of the sidewalk. I believe Ms. Rojas will um, I know made a point and. Did around, um, if anybody would like to provide comments at this point, so the applicant knows where we stand. And what we what we observed at the at the sidewalk, so the provisions of public and the applicant.
I'd like to say that I haven't been able to do the sidewalk on my own. I know I wasn't able to attend that day. But I will attempt it um to hopefully. Uh, not sure if any major decisions need to be made today, but I will make sure to make a visit.
So, Mr. Chair, I I guess I I guess I can start with some of the observations that I made during the walkthrough. Um. And I would in Rebecca, if you want to pull that plan back up. Uh, might be a little easier to talk, talk about.
Which plan, which plan would you like? Did I? I lost.
Actually, yeah, if if you can pull up the landscaping plan.
Yeah.
I can go off, I think I can go, I could start going off of that.
That'd be great.
Are we talking existing conditions or proposed landscaping?
Um, you could you could leave it at, you pull up the existing conditions if you have it.
I do.
Well, well, the the problem with that is the existing conditions aren't going to show the buildings and walkways or anything else, correct?
The proposed, no, that's fine. Let me pull up the. Uh, proposed landscaping. This one. And landscaping. Let's see. Oh, uh, there you go.
Yeah, that that's fine. Let's let's. Let's, let's, yeah, if we can. So let's start at, let's start at the. You know, the rear, the rear of the uh along Romney Road in the back.
Yes.
So I I, you know, at the other, at the other side way down back at the other end of Romney Road. We asked them to keep a lot of those very tall, mature pine trees, which they were able to do. I would strongly encourage you guys, and I I'd like to see a bigger buffer between Romney Road and your buildings. I, you know, you got some really nice mature trees there that I can't find any reason why you want to take those out. I think you should leave the burn that's actually there. And 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 give a little bit more, you know. Cover, you know, coverage and don't don't take down. Right now, you guys are proposing to take down an awful lot of trees that I that shouldn't really have to go. So I'd like to see you guys consider keeping a lot of those mature trees in that place and making the buffer wider than what's than what's shown on these plans. So that that was one observation. The second observation that I that I I that I want to ask is, are you, do you plan on taking some of the fill from the front and building it out back? It just, it seems like we're taking the the property down. A good amount um and trying to fill it back up. We should almost want to treat this as two levels of property. I I think it would be a better. A better way to go. That's the one, that's one of my observations from the back road. Another observation that I'd like to see is the other road that's going out on the side of the, well, call it plain south of the property. And taking down that retaining wall. I don't think honestly that that's really good idea. And I'd like to know why you can't turn the trucks and make another cut out on Bedford Street. I'd like to, I, you know, you should, I don't think that you really need to disturb that much property and land. And trees. And even and even go into Romney Road or that portion of Romney Road when you could just continue and go straight out to Bedford Street. Those were two, two of my major concerns of that street and a wider buffer in the back of Romney Road. And I'll stop there and let other members. Have anything to say.
I'll add, I'll add on to that, if I may. Um. I don't quite know enough about the uh the the two lot idea with the the movement of uh materials there. But it made a lot of sense to hear that. Uh, I'm definitely uh in alignment with that. Uh, second uh driveway coming on on the Romney rather than on Bedford.
We all set, Mr. Haley? Mr. Haley, you all done with your comments, sir?
Yes, sorry.
So I I have one other comment also, because I did take a ride up there today. And when you, and when you come up Bedford Street, the lot but you know, between. Um. The construction company on on the other side, you know, there's some really tall pine trees that are that you can see. From a good distance right off of Bedford Street. And according to this plan, all those are coming down. That looks like they probably could stay in that planted area that you're showing now, so. I'm a little wary on 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 how much the trees you're clearing. Unless you unless you're gonna have an arborist tell me that those trees aren't gonna last, you know, a year after we we after we go ahead and do some construction. So that that's another last comment that I have.
Geller, in the sidewalk? You guys can hear me, Harry, is that correct?
Yep, you're the only other person at the sidewalk.
Yeah, so you know, so I just. You know, I'll I'll just kind of go off, you know, I I tried to apply this plan and my observations to the the zoning. So Rebecca, at some point, we're gonna see this as two lots, right? A subdivision.
That's correct.
And then, you know, then when I look at six point three, six point three one, six point three one C. You know, everything, and I know some people don't like our new standards, and I know they're new, and I know we've had, you know, projects of our. Of sites in the past, clear cut, and we didn't want them to be. But like it or not, we did adopt these new standards, you know, about eighteen months ago. Um. So if you look at six point three point one C. And it it looks, talks about, you know, and I won't read everything. It's basically talks about to the greatest extent extent possible. The development shall be located to preserve and enhance the natural features of the site. To minimize impacts, uh to minimize alteration, to maintain natural features, et cetera, right? And then, you know, that's, if you go on to six point three point three. One, it talks about maintaining the natural topography outside the footprint. Four talks about building placement not to detract from scenic qualities. Six talks about preservation of existing vegetation, particularly around the perimeter. You know, uh. Six point four landscaping talks about um proposed development shall screen negative impacts. And shall minimize tree and vegetation and soil removal. And gray change. Six point four point two talks about a street buffer strip of twenty feet with, you know, four inch caliper trees every thirty feet. Six point four point seven. Talks about natural burns, you know, and I think there is a natural burn there already along Romney Road in the back on Romney Road. On the top of that wall and then in the back across from that residential home and any existing business there. And it says that we can ask for a burning to achieve these goals. And then again, in ten point six point seven, it talks about, you know, item four, landscape, landscape and minimizing soil. Adding burns. Number five. Uh, building location um shall be, you know. Place to maintain existing vegetation, vegetation talks about screening again. And and just on the sidewalk, I mean, I've been around that city hundreds of times, you know, whether it be. Painted or in front of it. And when I got on top of that way and then I realized what a drop there was and how much soil is actually being removed. And it is going to be clear cut. And to me. You know, I I'm very excited to see these businesses go there and I want them to go there, but I want it to work into the natural site. And I I I look at all these standards and I look at this plan and I'm like, how does this meet any of those standards? I guess. I guess I don't know when you're removing forty thousand yards of fill. And you you take them out all the, basically all the trees, how does that meet any of these standards, whether it's a six three, six four or ten point six? And I'd like to see that, you know. You know, a strong buffer. That natural burn that's already along Romney Road, make it be maintained. Uh, you know, minimize spell and I agree with with uh Mr. Geller. You know, it is going to be two lots because under hundred years, somewhere. We only allow, you know, one principal use per lot. You know, it's like, I understand, it's gonna have to be removal on that front lot because you got to be a side burner, but on the back lot, try to maintain that elevation, try to maintain the burns along Romney Road, try to. You know, limit turn points, et cetera, et cetera, so. I I think that, you know, I'm encouraged about the businesses coming to town. I hope it can work. I I want to see it work then. But I think that. These standards have to be met. To achieve what we're trying to achieve in in town now, so. And I think, I just think that that massive clear cutting and the removal of the burns, the walls, the trees, um kind of goes against everything we have in this I understand. Those are.
Mr. Chairman, I am online now and I would like to speak when you're done.
You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Let let the bullet finish their comments, Mr. Silva, and we'll go back to you.
Sure, okay, because I couldn't hear the early part of it, so.
Any other board comments about the sidewalk? Any other board comments, even if you weren't in the sidewalk? Any other board questions at this point, just out for anybody?
I would just, uh, I would like to say that I'm on board with proposing keeping the trees by Romney Road and um. And I believe it was Bedford Street, no Bedford Street already has no trees. And the other road, um. That was mentioned that already has trees I'd avoid. Or prevent that if possible. So I'm not sure what the reason behind that is yet. Um. Would like to know if it's possible to ask uh Mr. Larry Silva and uh his team. You know, the purpose behind that, why they feel that it's beneficial at this point.
You know, and I know we got a staff memo and I know we we have a plan from from the engineer, but you know. I think it's our job to weigh the plan and the staff memo against the zoning and the requirements and I'd like to. You know, I I don't see how any of those screening, landscaping, grading, locker removal of of soil is being maintained, so I I think that needs to be incorporated in the site, but. At this point, we can turn it back over to the applicant with the public comment, Mr. Silva, Mr. Baptiste.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Alright, I I I I am not uh being very successful in connecting uh via Zoom. I don't know if other people are having that same issue, but. I I get in there, everything says it's okay, and then I go to connect and and it doesn't allow me to join a meeting, so I don't really know what's going on with that. But I had to call it in, and so if I could go back to where we had talked about before as it related to this uh site. Um. This site is an unusual site. This site is a site that has grades that are on the northern side, which are in excess of eighty, elevation eighty, up eighty to eighty five. You can show the uh. Maybe Rebecca, can you put on the uh existing conditions uh for the site? So the grade, the grades in the in the northern part, like I say, are in excess of eighty five. As you can see up top, there's a uh about the Gabriel uh property up there. That's the top of the hill. That top of the hill on the other side of it um comes down sharply because it goes down to where um. Uh, Pad Corporation excavated out that area and brought down their operating area down into the mid seventies or somewhere around there elevation wise. Okay, and but where we can't um, we can't do that. We have to actually meet the grade. Uh, at the property line, and so the grades along that stretch go from at Bedford Street down to elevation seventy. Climb up and go up into the mid eighties and then come back on the backside where it intersects Romney Road. Back down to elevation eighty one. So that's one constraint on that side. You take Romney Road on the backside there, you're going from eighty one. And then as you travel south on Romney Road, it goes down to elevation sixty five, I believe, at the corner where it bends. And then it comes down on Romney Road and goes from that sixty five all the way back over to elevation sixty eight or so. And along Bedford Street from sixty eight going north up to back up to that seventy one. So you have a, you're you're got a site that's bound by uh three roadways. And and a property that uh has an elevation that is much higher uh than the rest of the property. Uh, boundaries uh to the three roads. So you can't just say you're gonna not remove material and make this site work. In order to make the site work, you have to do what we're doing, like building a uh one building into the hill. And what we have to do with the rest of it is bring it down in order to create a plane in which we can. Um. Develop the site, but also meet stormwater requirements. And provide for detention basins and so forth. So I understand the 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 criteria about maintaining twenty feet of of vegetated areas along the road. Uh, I would say of the comments that were made, I think that's the one that maybe we can do a little bit more on in order to make that work. But to say that we um. Uh, need to work from that retaining wall elevation along Romney Road, I would have to say no. Because that that retaining wall was put in without engineering design. It's not structurally certified by anyone. And once we uh do any site work here, uh, who are we gonna rely on if there's a problem with uh Romney Road? There is nobody that's accountable for that, and it's built within a right of way, which is actually not even supposed to be done in the town of Bridgewater. You're not supposed to be able to build a private right uh retaining wall within a right of way. So there's a whole host of reasons why the site had to be designed the way it is. To answer the question about having two different elevations, I think I caught part of that about how we we can step up from one to the other. We are stepping up. The the Ace Hardware site is at one elevation and then the storage uh facility is at a different elevation and there is a retaining. Component of it. So. I think we lost.
Mr. Silva, yeah, Mr. He muted himself.
He muted.
There he is.
Hello?
You're back?
I was always here, I don't know what happened.
It muted you.
Well, I'll see, there you go. I don't know how it did it. Because I wasn't touching anything. So, um. Alright, so. We've done. The best that you can do in order to make this crazy kind of elevation changes in this area and to make this work. To say that it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, is is to say that all the properties around this have done a lot of clear cutting in order to do whatever they're doing. And uh at testimony at the last meeting said that the property to the rear of us, uh that they bought a single uh a residential home. And that they they did not know that this was going to be developed as a a commercial property. Well, that's not just a residential home in the back. There's businesses back there. As part of that property. And the rock and and the and the Prisco property just next to that has a myriad of different kinds of uses on it. And and so we've been told that we got two different principal uses and we have to separate them on separate lots. That's fine, we will do that. But this property, there seems to be an awful lot of pushback not to be able to develop this property the way it needs to be developed. And I and I really do feel that it's unjustly being criticized for uh for what the proposed. Uh, plan is. This. Uh, plan is. This proposed plan has been well thought out. And we have looked at all the possible ways to be able to do it. And this is the right way to do it. If we need to be able to do a little bit more to get the twenty-foot compliance. Then I agree that that would be a a criteria that we should try to meet and will meet. But to say for us to use the wall on retaining on Romney Road, I would say absolutely not. It's our goal to tie into the grades that are on Romney Road. And that's how we would be starting where we'd be coming from. At at best. If we took that wall down to a single row. Where I don't have to worry about the structural part of it and then grade up from one course of bricks on that side. Then I think we can make that kind of an adjustment. But not to say that we're going to leave that wall as it stands right now at the height that it's at and rely on it from a structural point of view. Just can't do it. And we have a landscape plan in order to try to, uh, beautify this site and to make it look look, uh. Look good when it's finished. We have a landscape architect involved. Uh, I hear other kinds of projects that I've heard just recently on here where there's no landscape architect that is involved in the project. We do have one. And she has done, um, a good job in laying out what what we're proposing to do. And if we have to adjust that in order to comply. With the bylaw, we will.
Any staff comments? Questions for the board to stand?
No, not at this time. We did forward along, uh, Town Engineer Greg Kansy's letter. Um, over to the applicant and to the board members. Um, so the applicant does have that information in hand.
And we're in the and we are in the process of addressing those comments.
Is there, um, anybody from the public that wishes to speak, um, on this project? I, you know, again. If it's a new comment or, um, something that. That you'd like to say about the project, please say your name and address of the record, please. Do we have anybody, um? Still right?
If, let me just, um, let's see if I can have the screen unshared. All right. Everyone can raise your virtual hands or raise your hands. Um, we have, uh, Steve Prisco with his hand raised.
Mr. Prisco, go ahead.
Hi, good evening.
Yes.
Would you just say say your name and address of the record, please?
Uh, Steve Prisco. One thirty Aldridge Road and eight Romney Road in Bridgewater. Can you guys say any yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I I just want to go back, um, real quickly. Mister Silva mentioned my business. I don't think that's really anything to do with tonight, but to his remarks. Everything that I have done from the get-go has been approved by the town of Bridgewater. The wall, I was under mandated order by the Conservation Commission in two thousand and six. To build that wall. And that wall has worked. That wall cost me a lot of money. And that wall was watched by Mister Hickey, who worked for the Building Department at the time. And also by Harry Bailey from the Conservation Commission. Um, and it was done by local folks that may have a chance to speak tonight to the point as far as the structural. Um, condition and and so forth. Um, so I want to make that clear. That wasn't something that I. Wanted to put up or or or, you know, from an aesthetical standpoint. We were mandated by the town of Bridgewater to do that, and it didn't cost ten cents. You know, Larry talks about elevations. He's an engineer. I'm not, and I don't think many people listening tonight are. It's easy by to confuse people. Again, you're trying to put too much on the one lot. And from my angle, you know, it 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 you're getting people involved that, um. Maybe don't know all the bylaws, uh, maybe they have. Uh, my neighbors live here, so they're going to have a different twist. I have families going up and down that roadway. If you guys came by the last two or three days and you see the hundreds of little kids that are walking up and down, this is our livelihood. This is more than trying to appease Mister Silva and and his applicant with what they want to try to do. I think they mistook the property for what it is, for what they were trying to do. It's their own fault, their own problem. You know, again, looking at the bylaws. I mean, this is just started. We have a lawyer. He is very sick. We are going to change up with a new lawyer. I don't even want to do. Most of the speaking because I'm not an attorney and I'm not an engineer, but it common sense prevails. And I reiterate, it's too much on one property. And you're putting the onus on the families and the abudders in the community to a certain degree. That wall is not going anywhere, Mister Silva. I will fight this until I die. That's all I have to say.
Mister Chairman, I would ask for him not to be threatening me on the.
I'm not threatening you, Larry, but you know what?
Point of order.
Mr. Prisco, Mr. Prisco, would you say what you had to say? Thank you. Is there anybody else, um, from the public that wishes to speak?
Um, we have a Christine Ranko.
And I'm sorry, Shannon, I I'm working on a very limited screen. Yes, I. Sorry.
Christine.
Hi, everybody. We're, um, Christina Matt Ranko at seven Romney Road. Um, I spoke last time. I just have a couple more questions. Um. I'm going to just keep reiterating and and asking for that buffer of trees. That's really important to us. Um, as far as the wall goes, I'm asking. My question is, how often will trucks be using that? I mean, we're going to tear down this whole wall so trucks can go in and out. Like, how often is that? Is that going to be several times a day? Like. Just don't know who can answer that for us.
Yeah, I can, I can, I guess, point of order.
Why don't we let the applicant answer that, Mister Silver, Mister Baptiste?
The, um, the the, uh, trucking is really for, uh, deliveries, um, to Ace Hardware. That's really what the the trucking is for. Um, the. The use of the storage facility is from the, um, driveway, which is at the northeast corner of the property. It's a straight shot into the facility. It's a gated facility. Uh, any any work that's done or anybody going in and out is going in there and going back out to Bedford Street. The only use of that, uh, driveway that's on Romney Road is, uh, really for, um. The loading and un- unloading, loading is to the rear of the Ace Hardware. And as you can see, that driveway connects over to Romney Road from that.
So there's no way to predict how often that will be, or we're not sure. Will it be?
It's it's minimal, it's minimal because it's really just when they're getting deliveries for the most part.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just say if it's minimal, I don't understand why there has to be destruction to the wall. I mean, if it was a constant need for it, if it's going to be just such a minimal thing, why can't they just use the. You know, the entrance, just like regular cars would up front by Bedford?
The wa- the wall has nothing to do with the the trucking or the entrance to Romney Road.
So what is?
It has to do with development. The wall has to, the the changing the grade along Romney Road is what, uh. In other words, our site design brings the grade down on the Romney roadside to the same level that it is there now. So, uh, the point of the wall at that point is move. It'd be a a wall sticking out of the ground with the grade on each side of it at the same elevation.
Okay, I think I was under the impression that trucks were going to be coming in and out from that that side. Like from.
There is only, there's a, there is a driveway. If you look on the site plan, there is a driveway which is, uh. Closer to where opposite where the ice cream stand is closer down that way.
Right. I think that that's what I was referring to. Yes, yes, that where you're pointing to, like, so. Like, you know, travel from back and forth there.
Uh, I, like I say, uh, it's minimal. And as you can see where that road comes from, that comes from the back of the Ace Hardware. So that's that's the, uh, truck. It's a one-way, uh, entrance to the back of of the of the, uh. Past the propane tank. That's a a one-way aisle coming down to the back of the Ace Hardware. And then from there, the truck, um, is would leave directly out from there. So for the most part, incoming truck going to Ace Hardware would be coming in on Bedford Street. Coming into the back of the Ace Hardware and then leaving out to Romney Road. Now, will there be some customers that want to come in and out from Romney Road? There will be. Some customers that'll want to come in that way if it's convenient for them to do that. Um, and that's not going to be prohibited as far as, uh, as that as a as a traffic movement, but not truck movement. You, as you can see, the the the, I don't know if you can tell, but by the geometry of it. Um, it really, it it lends itself to an exiting aisle for a for a truck. Um, even coming in with a truck would be very awkward for a truck to come in. Because the truck would come in, he'd have to go around the detention basin and go into the front of Ace Hardware to do anything. Whether or not he was going around the back of the Ace Hardware, or if he was going to try to go up to the. Uh, storage facility, that it makes no sense to go that way. Um, so the storage facility is really serviced by the by that northern, um, driveway. Uh, in and out to the storage facility, and that's a gated facility. So that that facility, once you enter it into that area, that's fenced all the way around. There's no exit. Uh, out to to the side that you're on. There is one emergency gate. That's on the, um, the northwest corner there, which allows for, uh, for fire apparatus. Or or emergency personnel to be able to come in, uh, to the facility. It is not an operating area going in and out of the storage facility.
So, again, this is hard, this is a little confusing for me to understand, and I'm having a hard time understanding why we can't just have a truck. Exit awkwardly when now we have to negatively affect. Something that's been there for eighteen years, like, so let the trucks just get out awkwardly, like.
So.
I just, I'm just an average person, but me, it makes zero sense, and I don't think.
Okay.
I just don't.
Let me just, so so if I can answer it, um, the wall is in the is in the right of way. It's a right of way in which the, there are, uh, a number of properties, including you, that have the rights to use Romney Road. Our client has the right to use Romney Road. That wall. Um, prevents him from using Romney Road. He has as much a right to use Romney Road. As each and every one of the other owners along Romney Road. It's built into their deeds. So the wall, so the wall really needed, when the wall was put in. It should have been, um, there should have been a release given by the abutting property. At that time, it wasn't.
All right. So just just to move on, I think we get Mrs., uh, and I'm saying is it Ranko? I apologize. Objection to that of that driveway. So do you have any other comments at this point?
Um, I just have another question about the propane. Um, I know there's one at Prisco's. Now there's proposal to be one, you know, on this property. Um, they're pretty large. What are we, like, how, I'm just wondering, as somebody who lives close by, is there a safety concern now? We have these two huge propane tanks very close to our home, like, is that something that was thought about or looked at? I really truly don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I I could not, uh, you raised the question about the distance, I think before you raised the question about. Distance between propane tanks. I could not find anything that suggested that. That there was a, um, a requirement for this type of propane tank to be any particular distance from another one like it. Um, when the propane tank, um, is permitted through the fire department. Um, it certainly will be looked at from that point of view. If it's, if there is some regulation that we haven't seen, and I don't think exists. That says that this propane tank cannot be here if there's one on a neighboring property or a nearby property. Um, then that issue would come up. It would not really. Um, I come up in this planning board process unless a a letter was received by the fire department. Uh, indicating anything to that, to that point. But I don't see that there is any. Um, there is any conflict between the two propane tanks.
Okay.
Except business.
That's something the fire department would double check. Is that what you're saying?
Just just seeing.
Well, it has to be permitted through the fire department.
Okay.
We and we do send the plans to to the fire department.
Okay.
All plans go to all departments when you, when we submit them. That's why we submit so many copies is because they go to all departments. So they've had a chance to look at it.
Mrs. Ranko, do you have anything else at this point?
Um, not right now. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Uh, we have a Ray Jemian of here.
He doesn't want to leave, huh?
Yeah, I I thank you, Rage. I mean, two-two-one, Oligous Road. Um, I apologize for coming in late. I made the incorrect assumption that the planning board agenda would be longer than, uh. It is at the at this time. Just a couple of quick comments, um. Based on last time that this came up before the board, I know there was an issue of the, um. The trees along the border. I know that I'm not sure whether that was discussed tonight. But in driving by, um, I totally agree with the the chair that the trees should be, that a a buffer of trees should be kept. I think that's really important since the project is, uh, so large. On that point, I understand this is commercial, uh, the zone. And I I have no problem with the hardware store, but the the warehouse itself seems, um. It should be smaller. It's just, it it's stuffing a large project on a very small piece of land. And I think, uh, it 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 should be, um, scaled down. And lastly, as I brought up last time, um, if this project goes through, and I I don't know whether it will or not. Um, the the, uh, new zoning does allow for mitigation regarding trees. Since that the actual formula for that has not been developed at this point, I would hope that the developer, um, willingly. Um, gift the town X number of thousand dollars to prior to any tree being cut. Um, so that more trees can be planted, um, around the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Jemian. And we do have an associate member seat available if you're interested. Do we have any anybody else?
Um, I don't have anyone in the chat, nor I don't have anyone, um. Let me just look at the screen again. I don't see anyone with their virtual hands raised, Mister Chair, so I believe that. That's actually, we have, uh, actually David Gabriel with his hand raised. David?
Excuse me. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, uh, David Gabriel, twenty-two Elmwood Crescent, seven eighty-five Bedford Street. Um, I had brought up the subject along the 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 property line on the northern side of the project. Um, as far as, uh, some sort of, uh, either buffer or fencing, uh, has that been discussed?
I know the plans haven't changed since our last last meeting, Mister Gabriel, as far as I can say now.
Oh, they have not been changed. Okay. We have, again, I'd like to, I'd like to just, I know we were talking about a twenty-foot buffer, but it sounded like Larry was talking about the. The grade change would prevent a a twenty-foot buffer from happening because. If you have any type of grade change, you're going to have to take away the vegetation for it. Um. If that's true, then is it possible that we could still talk about having some sort of fencing around? Not so much as, you know, for more for security. Now that I've got, you know. As far as 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 people now, it's going to be the public that's going to be traversing through, uh, you know. That piece of property. It's more for security reasons than anything else.
Okay, thank you, Mister Gabriel. I think your comments have been noted.
Yep. Yep, noted. Uh, we have Carlton with his hand raised.
Quick question for the Ace Hardware. Say, Carlton Hunt, eighty Austin Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good. Quick question. What size of delivery truck is anticipated for the Ace Hardware? Is it a straight truck, fourteen-wheeler, eighteen-wheeler? Because that makes a difference about that access and the ability to actually go around the building and go back out to Bedford Street. And avoid the problem on the Romney Road and the removal of that wall. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like.
Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak?
Uh, I don't see anyone with their hands raised at this time, Mr. Chair, so I think that's it.
How about, um, board feedback and public comments, or any questions or concerns?
Would you, uh, would you want anyone to address any of those comments?
Yeah, can, can, uh, can Mr. Hunt's question be answered, please?
Uh, the, the types of trucks that, uh, would go to Ace would be of, of, uh, different sizes. So I, I can't preclude the fact that there would be some that would be trailer-sized, and then there would be others that would be smaller. Um, so it all depends on what is being delivered to the Ace at that time. Uh, and as far as the fencing question that Mr. Gabriel answered, the, uh, the storage facility is a fenced-in facility. Um, so that portion of it is, uh, obviously will be fenced, uh, on that section.
And, um, is there any board comments? So, I mean, I'll just reiterate my comments from earlier, I mean, our job is to weigh the project, whether we like it or not, against the, against the standards, right? And I look at six-point-three, I look at six-point-four, and I look at ten-point-six. And I understand there is going to have to be some soil removal, I understand that there are going to be some grade changes. But everything in our new standards, I know stuff two, the, two years ago, three years ago was clear-cut, and that's why we changed the, the zoning to have, um, more stringent, uh, performance standards with more landscape requirements and, you know, more buffering, et cetera, so, um. I would encourage the, the applicant to take in, to account the, the comments from the sidewalk, um, that we had. And I would encourage, you know, the applicant to look at six-point-three, six-point-four, and ten-point-six and try to mitigate, you know, the amount of soil that has to be removed from the site and try to maintain the natural boundaries and to try to, um, you know, provide some, you know, substantial screening and, and leaving the, the perimeter trees.
About some, um, are they going to offer any sidewalk for safety?
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you'd have to address yourself for a comment, I'm sorry.
So probably, are you trying to make a public comment, man? Hello?
Hello, Ms. Jin?
Hi, yes, I'd like to make a comment, Virginia Doggins, sixty-five Fox Hill Drive. I have a question on safety, are they going to offer any sidewalks or something? Um, what about the businesses in the back from the ice cream, the kids go on up to Prisco's to play ball or golfing? So if you take down that wall, and there's trucks in and out of there, and this kid's going up there all day long, um, is there, are they going to offer any sidewalk safety, especially if you take down that wall and all the businesses and trucks going in and out of there? I mean, this place is, is it going to be lighting? Um, I'm just talking on a safety point of view, I don't know if, um, Silva can answer that, or Prisco, or anybody could answer that question, there's a lot of kids go up and down that street.
Right, thank you. Um, I think I finished what I was trying to say, I don't know if you guys could hear me clearly, I don't know.
Yeah, we could hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, so do you want us to address that one?
Well, I mean, I think it's noted for the record, Mr. Silva, that there's a concern about sidewalks and stuff, so it's, it's noted. Um, any, is there any other public comment before we wrap up public comment?
I believe MJ has her hand raised.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Gabriel. You're part of the board, so, oh, let me, let me, let me finish public comments, I'll come back to the board.
Okay.
And I apologize, guys, I'm, I'm not at my typical location and I'm working on a different computer, the, the screen's very small, so I apologize for the unprofessionalness of this meeting here, so, um. So is there any other public comment before we close the public comment section of this hearing?
We have, uh, Carlton with his hand raised again.
Hi, Carlton Hunt, eighty Austin Street again, I have a que.
I'm sorry, Carlton, you cut out.
Question, if Concom required the wall to be put up, why is Concom not at the table?
I, I believe they have applied to Concom, Mr. Dr. Hunt. It's.
That is correct.
He's still on, I, I, he seems to be.
I, I'm here, I heard you, thanks.
Alright, public comment, I'm going to close public comments, there's no public comment, did we see anybody else, Shannon?
We have Nancy Prisco with her hand raised. Nancy?
Hi, Nancy Prisco, hi, Nancy Prisco, hi, Nancy Prisco, hi, Nancy Prisco.
Nancy, you gotta fix your microphone. Or Steve's got to shut off his, or mute his to, for you to talk.
Sorry about that, Nancy Prisco, one-thirty Aldrich Road. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, couple things that I heard earlier, um. So, seven Romney Road, the Henry, the, Enrico, what? Ranko's property, um, that was owned by somebody else, a contractor. And that was clear-cut, and the person that was there did whatever they wanted to do, um, and the town didn't do anything. But unfortunately, Steve and I at Prisco's took the brunt of it. So, when it rains, our property floods. And when it rains, Romney Road floods. So with this eight-fifteen Bedford Street project, when it rains and with all the rain that we've had recently, what's going to happen to Romney Road and our property? With all of those buildings and all of the rain, where is everything going to go?
Thank you for your comment.
Let's go, do you have any other comments?
Is there any, anything else, Nancy or Steve?
So, well, so what's going to happen with, like, that wall comes down, and now where is all that water going to go? Is it going to come down that road that they put in between the two businesses? And then come onto Romney Road and then flow into wetlands that belongs to? Prisco's? Because I can say that's not going to happen.
So, Mr. Taylor, I, I, well.
Would you like the applicant to address this, Pat?
Sure, Mr. Silva wants to describe the proposed drainage, that'd be helpful.
The, uh, the drainage system is designed in order to contain the water onsite and recharge the water back into the aquifer. There is, um, a provision like there has to be in all drainage designs to allow for water to go downhill in a condition that exceeds drainage, um, design criteria. And so there would be stone on the, uh, side slope of the, uh, on the stormwater basin, which is, um, just south of the storage facility and also south of the, um, Ace Hardware facility. And so there is a provision to let water go downhill, but it is already designed in order to keep all water on the site and recharge it into the basin.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have one more question then, so if conservation had us put the wall up to protect Mr. Lemay's property, because that's really what it was originally, so that we wouldn't have any damage to his, he wouldn't have any damage to his property from the road that we're now accessing because of our business in the back, taking that wall down, I get it, it's, it's a private road, there's funky rules with it, I get all of that, but taking that down because of the grade, I, I just, I don't see it.
How does conservation, they can do it, and it gets overturned for money, twelve years later.
So conservation told us to do it eighteen, nineteen years ago, and now because
of money.
Because this group wants to come in and put all of this on this piece of property, maybe they need to back down what they have on it. Or maybe reconfigure something, I don't know, but it doesn't, it, it, uh, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't, and it's going to impact us. And if you're coming into our neighborhood and you're impacting somebody who's already here, that's not fair, it's just not, it's not fair, we've been here eighteen years. Um, you know, it's just, we're not going anywhere. Um, Romney Road is not a road that a truck can pull out of comfortably, because we do get tractor trailers back here that can't come back and forth. So that, that come, coming out onto Romney Road, that's not going to happen, the road's too narrow there. There's wetlands on the other side. Um, and yes, they can't, they have the right to use Romney Road. And it, that, then it's, it looks like, well, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to take care of it, because right now, Prisco's takes care of it. So are they going to take care of it, are they going to widen it, are they going to do anything else to Romney Road if they think they're going to take this wall down, but? And I, I, I don't buy the whole lot of things, so we'll see what conservation says, I guess, at this point. I guess I have nothing further.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have, uh, Thomas Praddy who would like to speak.
Oh, Mr. Praddy, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thomas Praddy, thirty-seven Bolton Place, Bridgewater, Massachusetts. I'd just like to very quickly read six-point-four-point-one and make comments after that. Purpose, this section is intended to ensure that the proposed development shall screen negative impacts from public and private views, minimize tree, vegetation, and soil removal and grade changes. It seems to me that this entire proposal does opposite of everything this particular zoning bylaw is asking for. Now, it's obvious that the proponent wants to do as much as he can to this particular site, and I completely understand that. And I, more than anyone, is not stopping business from coming to Bridgewater, it is more than needed. However, this, the scope of this work for the proposed site is obviously too large. And I think it's up to the planning board, who is supposed to act, obviously, in the best interest of the town and its people, to try in and keep the proponent happy, but also minimize the site so it doesn't have the impact that this particular zoning bylaw says. And it's a very important bylaw, and it should be, uh, looked at, very, very important, so. Those are just my comments, um, again, business is welcomed, we want everyone to be here, but there's a scope to business, and it has to be regulated, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, I don't see anyone.
Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. Chairman, I just did want to point out that, um, the zoning bylaws also call for lot coverage, uh, limitations, and this site does meet the lot coverage limitations for both building and, and lot coverage.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other public comment at this point?
Um, I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Chair, um. That's what I have right now.
Alright, so I'll go back to, uh, board comments before we decide to continue.
We just add it to the chat chain, if you could just check it.
Oh, you want your husband to talk?
Okay.
Alright, Matt, would you like to?
Yeah, Matt, seven Romney Road, yeah, so, um, I mean, basically, from what I hear and understand the bylaws, it doesn't sound like the project can satisfy them, it doesn't even really seems like it comes close, so, um, my understanding is because the project is going to be so large, they have to take that wall down. So my question is, what, what takes precedent now? Is it a project because they have no other options and they're not able to scale down, or the bylaws?
Well, you know, I mean, our job is to weigh the project against our zoning ordinance, so that's, that's our job, so.
Yeah, I can also reiterate the differences between structures in a right-of-way and structures on private property. Um, the board does have jurisdiction in certain aspects of each of them, but there are private way, there are private property matters that do exist with this project, especially within a private right-of-way that we're looking at, but there, there, it also has to be resolved with those who have ownership within the private way as well.
Right, but I think, I think, I think, Mr. Ryan, that the point is, is it's our job to weigh this project against six-point-three, six-point-four, six, uh, ten-point-six, and obviously the dimensional requirements, lot coverage and everything else.
Sure, and I haven't heard anything from the applicant that stated that they won't adjust their project to kind of meet these standards.
Alright, so do we, do we have any other public comment?
One other quick question, um, what is the, does anybody know the legality of, like, when you have a right-of-way and there is access to a main route?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
I, I guess I don't understand.
I don't, I don't think that distinguishes the difference between a private way.
I thought there was, um, in Massachusetts, um, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, I was advised that when there's rights of way and there is availability to a main route, there are some conditions regarding that. I didn't know if anybody had information on that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment, and that is, is that, I, 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 I just want to re, I'm sorry, just want to reiterate that I have never.
Can they, can they hold on one second, please?
I don't see any, there's no other public comment at this time, um, I know Mr. Silva, uh, wanted to talk, as well as, uh, Ms. Fagon had her hand raised.
Alright, so I'll, I'll go back to, unless there's no more public comment, we'll, we'll go back to, um, the applicant, Mr. Silva, go ahead, Mr. Silva.
I, um, I just want to go on record as saying is that there is nothing that I have seen anywhere that shows that that wall was ever designed, certified as a structural wall, um, along Romney Road.
There are any other, um, board comments at this point? I think I reiterated mine in between the two public comment sessions, does anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, uh, sorry, Larry, I'll admit, uh, drainage is not exactly my, my strong suit, um, you mentioned, uh, that, uh, occasionally, um, rainwater will exceed onsite storage, can you describe, like, what kind of storm, or like, how often, uh, like, how much rainfall would, you would expect that to take, how often that might occur?
The, the, um, the criteria for design is that you have to, uh, design to the one-hundred-year storm for twenty-four-hour rainfall, which I believe is, uh, Rebecca's online here, but I believe that that's in excess of eight, eight, uh, eight inches in twenty-four-hour period, I believe.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, you would just mention talking about the wall, uh, you said it wasn't designed or certified as a structural wall, so, uh, do you know what the original design intent behind it was?
Uh, that, that, you could ask Mr. Prisco that, I, I have no idea.
Okay, thank you.
I, I believe that it was because the grade coming down from Lemay's, uh, came into, uh, what was Romney Road. And in order to push Romney Road back and make it, uh, uh, a road that, um, would allow for access to his, uh, um, project in the back, uh, that he needed to make the road, uh, more passable, wider, I don't know, you'd have to ask him.
Got it.
Any other board comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, if, if it's okay to ask through you, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Silva, I'm sorry.
Um, so, I guess, I guess a little bit of commentary, but also a couple of questions, um. First, uh, just looking at the plan itself, I, I'm. First, uh, just looking at the plan itself, I I myself feel like there's. I I appreciate that the proponent wants to make as much use of this uh lot of land as much as possible, it just feels like there's a lot going on in it. As opposed to just having one, one i- item be a project there on that land, not to mention with the uh buffers that people have referenced, um, Mister Geller made some very good points about it. Um, and I certainly share the concerns, especially from an environmental standpoint, uh, the more trees that are taken down, the more vegetation is removed. The higher likelihood is that there could be more runoff from that area, and since there are. Houses and a business that are basically downstream from a hillside that could eventually basically be clear. Of vegetation outside of those small, small buffers, it it could be more of a problem environmentally for. Not just the groundwater, but also for those that are abutting the project. Um, my question. That I do have for for Mister Silva, uh, Mister Chairman, if if he might be able to answer it for me, um. Do you folks have a three D rendering of what the finished project would look like with this change to the retaining wall that is being discussed this evening on Romney Road? Understanding that the project obviously is proposed with an opening or reduction of that wall itself, do you have anything that would help? Better educate those that might not necessarily have the spatial um understanding of plans and um documentation that. Some of us here on the board may have, because I know uh to the average layperson, just looking at a two dimensional drawing is um. Sometimes difficult to look at without some sort of uh hard visioning of it.
The name is MJ Spicone.
We do have a three D uh, we do have a three D rendering, uh, and it actually does show like a one uh one cost. Wall still remaining. Um, but I don't know if we could bring that up or not, Rebecca.
Are we thinking the um technical one, or are we doing the aerial that the landscape architect did?
The one that the landscape architect did?
Okay, I can do that.
This is going in the packet, there is in the last pack, there is an aerial view in the architecturals of each building.
Yeah, unfortunately, my packet didn't look like it had that stuff, that's why I was asking the question.
There's a public a chance to look at it.
Okay, so if you, can you see that illustration?
Yep, I can, uh, do you have something from facing from the south from the opposite end, cuz this is looking from the northeast to the southwest.
Well, no, but you can see the Romney Road, now, it's showing Romney Road paved, but it's really not paved on that side. Okay, and you can see there's just the the remnants of some of that wall is still shown, but as you can see, the grade has been brought down. So as you approach the grade that is Romney Road, there is really not. See, that wall's sticking out of the ground, it's really not. It's it's not really doing anything in terms of retaining like it's retaining of a a lodge hill right now. Um, once the grade would come down, it would be more in keeping with what the grades are on the adjoining areas.
Alrighty. Those answer my questions, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Silva. Um, do we have any other board comments? Okay, um, is any other staff comments?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman.
Mister Tansy, go ahead, sir.
Uh, I I do have some. Uh, concerns about cutting the grade down with respect to groundwater. Uh, I've taken a pretty good careful look at the test pit elevations. And I do have concerns with um. Certain grading grades, um, the road going down to Romney. The accessway going down to Romney Road. Uh, that's a, that's a significant cut. Um, I went out to the the site, I I I walked the site. I um spent several times looking at. Uh, the retaining wall along Romney Road. And I I I've been out there at least twice, and what I have noticed was. The gravel. Portion of Romney Road. Was dry on. On either side of the wetland, but at the wetland. There is a, there's a pooling along. The um. Along the retaining wall where it bleeds and runs across Romney Road. This this uh, this really. Is all indications that there's groundwater bleeding out of that retaining wall. When you cut that. Grade down. And you put. Two significant. Detention basins or retention basins. In that area, you're recharging that particular area with. With stormwater runoff, this this typically, or it oftentimes elevates the groundwater artificially in that area. The test pits indicate that. Portions of of those basins, uh, or at least one of them is will be in in the groundwater. Um. If that be the case, and you elevate the groundwater elevation in that area. Now you're not just. May having a runoff issue, but you've also got a groundwater issue bleeding into the basins. Which these basins, they're designed to infiltrate, and they are designed also to. Discharge a portion of the runoff, and they have a one inch diameter. Um, discharge port coming out of a control structure. And it will go into a level spreader that parallels. Uh, Romney Road. Uh, some of it might get infiltrated into that area and the rest of it will. Just sheet flow out onto Romney Road, cross Romney Road and go into the wetland. Um. Groundwater. Groundwater is a tricky thing, it can be a dangerous thing in the winter because it doesn't freeze until it sheets flow off over something. Um, it's much like the same as a snow melt. Um. You know, you have a snow, a pile of snow, a stockpile of snow and on a parking lot. It melts during the day, it runs to a catch basin, and at night it freezes and, you know, you have an icing situation. And this is, this is one of my concerns. About these grades being cut down so low in that area, um, right now, it looks like. We've got a groundwater issue, just, you know, as it's a modest groundwater issue right now. But it's there, I've seen it, it it flows over. Uh, this the portion of Romney Road where where it abuts the wetland. And the the rest of that gravel road was dry, so that's, that was telling me in that area, you've got some. Some groundwater bleeding out. Flowing over Romney Road. My concern is. With all the. Um. Impervious area that's going on to the site. You put it into the detention basins in that area where the grade has been cut down. Where a point, at least one portion of of the det- detention basins will be intercepting the groundwater. Um, from, you know, from what I've seen from the test pits, and I haven't witnessed the test pits either. Um, I, that, that's one of my major concerns, I mean, the rest of my comments could probably. Be worked out, um, you know, plan modifications and so forth, but. I just, there's, there's an awful lot of cutting uh um on the site, a lot of fill material going offsite. And there are groundwater issues associated with it, so I just wanted to. Uh. Uh, present that observation that I've, that I've seen.
Thank you, Mister Tansy.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Silva, go ahead.
With regard, with regard to the groundwater issue that he's making reference to. Uh, part of what he's referring to is a perched water within the area that's being excavated out, which would not exist after it's excavated out.
If, if I may respond. Um, a perched water table is presence of groundwater, um, it's, it's gonna be there, it's gonna be there, um. At certain times of the year. Um, and it and it has its effect, and it it does affect. Um, detention detention basin designs. Um. And 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 the fact of the matter is, what I've seen. With the bleed out that I've seen right now, coming out of that retaining wall. I'm not convinced that's a perched groundwater, um, some of the, some of the. Modeling and and whatnot that that occurred in some of the test pits may or may not have been a a perched water table. But as you typically. No matter where you are, as you approach. A water body such as a wetland that we have in this area, um. Uh, of Romney Road. You're going to have a groundwater that. It's not stabilized, it 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 actually goes up and it follows, um. It loosely follows the the grade of the the lay of the land, at least for a certain distance away from. From the water body or the wetland, and this particular wetland is a, it's a swamp, it is, it's a, it's a water body, so. I I I can't say that this is actually a true uh perched water table. In this area, and even if it isn't, it's still water that gets its way into the basin, and it's still going to affect. Its infiltration characteristics, especially during the wet seasons. Um, as you may be aware, um, just down the road on Bedford Street, nine hundred Bedford Street, the big warehouse building. They have a a very huge detention basin out back. And it's, it relies entirely on infiltration. It had very good uh sandy materials. And it had high groundwater separations, but it's not infiltrating in seventy two hours like it it should be there. And one of the reasons why it's not is because it gets overly inundated with water and. Um. Yeah, uh, an amount, uh, mounding situation occurs underneath this basin, and it's artificially. Uh, located in an artificially elevated uh water table, and it's not draining, and it's seventy two hours as it's supposed to be doing, and. I have concerns that that same condition. Is going to occur on the site in those two detention basins.
So I guess i- in the in the meantime, I think uh to through the chair, um, if possible, I think uh. We can as staff meet with Silva, um, prior to the next meeting that the applicant's on. To kind of address some of these concerns, um, that the board has as well as the town engineer. Um, and um. Have updated plans prior to that um next meeting, um, that staff will review and comment on.
Uh, I just have a question for Mister Tansy, um. Mister Tansy, do you think there's any way to mitigate the groundwater issue with the grade change where it take place, or do you think this would cause an inevitable worsening of the issue?
There are things that can be done to mitigate it. Um, under drains are one way of controlling um groundwater. But I think what we're, we're gonna have to do is do some more testing. Uh, according to the BMPs, the the DEP Stormwater Management um Regulations, they they do require three test pits. To be uh performed within the bottom of the area of the basins to confirm that. Um, there's a consistency of soils and that, um, you know, groundwater elevations. Uh, uh. Determined uh definitively, um, and are witnessed by. You know, myself or an agent of the town, in this case, it would would be myself by. Performing a um, a soil evaluation and and logging the uh, the modeling. Um, of 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 those test pits, and I think that really needs to be done, and I think we need to take a a real close look at this. Area and uh based on those findings, just come up with a. A design that works or. Um. Or some other redesign that that would work depending upon what we find.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, staff, more comments? Good?
Good.
No, we're good, I I think they've, I think they've heard what all our concerns and what we think to do, I mean, as far as buffering and and making up all the uh. Going through our zoning ordinances and. You know, those buildings have to get a little smaller from a hundred and seventy feet long down to. You know, one fifty or to make the buffers work, I I think it's something that the applicant should. Consider looking at, um. I think they know the concerns, I know that Larry's gonna go back and we're gonna end up getting new sets of drawings, so. I I'm good with that right now.
Okay, you know, and I just, I said it twice already, you know, six point three, six point four, ten point six, I'll talk about limiting, cutting. Cut and fill, limiting vegetation, providing buffers, uh, you know, permit trees, et cetera, so. I mean, I I've said it all twice already, um, I just hope the applicant takes the board comments, the staff comments. Um, and can, you know, modify things to make them comply with our regulations. Um. I mean, anything else from staff?
Uh, no, at this time, other than what I just said in terms of we can meet with the applicant and um schedule a.
Alright, and I, like, you know, I see there's a hand up for Mark P, I can, if if there is one more public comment, we can do that, but I'd like to wrap up the public comments, so. Mark P.
Sure.
Oh, sure, this is Mark Peterson, forty three Church Street, um, just, I noticed in, I fa- I'm sorry, I found the um, the notice of intent for the retaining wall. Uh, for their original project back in two thousand and seven, I posted that in the chat to uh, to Shane. So I I found there is a notice of intent for that retaining wall back in two thousand and seven, I got no. Dog in the fight, I just just wanted to point out that there is a notice of intent that for the um, I guess resurfacing of the Romney Road and then putting the retaining wall there, so, I just wanted to bring that up.
Alright, I can, yeah, I can provide that information over to the board.
Alright, so if there's nothing else. Like we got that comment, son, or do we have a motion to continue this to? What meetings would you like to do this time?
Larry, we have May first, May fifteenth, and then we have June fifth.
I I would say that uh we probably would have to go to May fifteenth.
Alright, so we have a motion from the board to continue this to May fifteenth?
Sub moved.
By Mister McDonald, do we have a second? Was that Mister Rojas or Mister Haley?
The two of us.
Uh, to a motion by Mister McDonald, second by Mister Rojas, any discussion? Mister Haley?
No discussion. Okay, yes.
Mister Ross?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
And I may ask, okay, thank you very much. Alright, um, do we have? Mister O'Brien, the agenda, you had some minutes, were those provided, I can see them.
They were at the end of the packet that I did provide, um, those include January third, tenth, seventeenth, and February seventh.
Okay, so I I didn't read them, but if everybody else didn't, we wanted to take a motion to accept those, I'm fine with that. If everybody's prepared to vote on that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from January third, seventeen, tenth, February seventh.
Okay, Mister Geller, do we have a second?
Second.
Mister McDonald, any discussion? James Ross?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And I may ask, okay, thank you. Um, Mister O'Brien, you had a workshop, do you want to schedule that for the first meeting in May?
Yeah, we can schedule, um, have a discussion, I've been working on. Um, I haven't given it a a full name yet, but active adult fifty five. How plus housing zoning ordinance workshop, uh, in in a sense of, rather than what we currently have now is. Kind of a senior housing where everything's congregated in one building, it's more of a similar to the open space. Um, conservation, um, development ordinance that we have, so I'm happy to uh include that on our May first meeting, I'll have um. Kind of a draft of what I have prior to that meeting, and we can discuss it as well as welcome public uh comment as well as board comment for those.
And this is just a workshop, it's not being introduced as the one in chat, it's wanna get comments back.
That's, that is correct. There's no referral from.
Global marketing document.
Correct. It's an election coming up, so we're holding off until after all that gets sorted out.
Okay, um. Any other board? Mister Rule, have any comments or Shane, do you have anything else to add or?
I I I think that I would just add that through the last eighteen months, we've heard. Uh, a number of residents expressing a desire for fifty-five and older housing that's not manufactured housing. Or is not an assisted living facility. Uh, we have some developers that are interested in doing fifty-five and older. Uh, nationally, it's one of the hottest real estate markets right now, so I think it's an opportunity for the town, but I think it's also. You know, beneficial to have a conversation about where it should be and what it should look like, so um. Think this is good to move this along.
Great, thank you. Mister O'Brien, you good?
Yeah, I think we have one more board item, but I'm still working on a a request. I received a request from the Town Manager's Office regarding. Um, street acceptances over at a a couple of streets on Old Field Estates. Um, so I'm working through that. It may be placed on that agenda, but it wasn't. Referred through an order through council. It was kind of just sent down to us. So I'm looking over that as well, so um I'll let you know if that'll be on with the next agenda.
So how do we provide a recommendation of this?
That's a, it's a question, it's a question I was forwarded along. A street acceptance, but not necessarily from a council, so I'm gonna have to look back at old council meetings to see if it was. Referring from a council meeting or not.
Did we say, have we got a report from um DPW on engineering yet?
No, I haven't. I'm still looking at other things going on with Old Field. Um, but. It may not be, it may, it may be on the May first or it may be on a a later date, so I'll let, I'll keep you guys posted.
Please get to the discussion, it's all okay, okay. Anything else?
Nope, not this time.
Any other else from uh board members at this point? Chan, I lost my agenda again.
It's alright, we're at, it's this part called adjournment. We're on a, we're at adjournment unless you have something from CPC or any other liaison reports.
Well. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Mister Geller? Secondly, Mister Haley, any discussion? Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Haley?
Yes.
Then I may ask. Good night, everyone.
Have a good.